Good evening. This is Town of East Line Board of Selectmen Public Hearing regarding an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance Establishing a School Building Committee." Do you want to read the notice?
Sure.
Oh, I have to say, I'm sorry. What did I have to say? That the public access is down, but you can see it on YouTube.
Okay.
We'll do that. We'll do it after.
Town of East Line Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Hearing Regarding an Ordinance Entitled, "Ordinance Establishing a School Building Committee." Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the East Line Board of Selectmen at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, October 15th, 2025, at the East Line Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyannick, Connecticut, to consider the ordinance entitled, quote, "Ordinance Establishing a School Building Committee," end quote. Copies of the full text of the proposed ordinance are on file for public inspection at the Office of the East Line Town Clerk, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyannick, Connecticut, and at www.eeltownhall.com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. The Board of Selectmen may make changes to the language of the proposed ordinance as a result of information presented in the public hearing, dated at East Line, Connecticut, on this first day of October, 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. So, is there anyone that would like to address the board with respect to the school building committee ordinance? Last again, anyone that wishes to address the board? Three times? All right. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
You have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The hearing is closed. All right, moving on. Good evening. This is the East Line Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting of October 15th, 2025. We're in the East Line Town Hall Upper Meeting Room. As I said earlier, the public access is down, but you can watch this on YouTube. Okay. So, can we rise and... So, do we have any additional agenda or consent calendar items?
Oh, additional, yes. Move to add Agenda Item Number 3E to appoint someone to the Park and Recreation Commission.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of adding that item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. Thank you. Are there any public delegations this evening that would like to address the Board of Selectmen? Okay, appears there are none. Next, it will be the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 1st, 2025.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 1st, 2025 as submitted.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Any adjustments or corrections to the meeting minutes? I'm not aware of any? None? All in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar for October 15th, 2025, in the amount of $2,616.33.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Looks pretty routine.
I'd like to, we did not get any explanation, as I've asked in the past, but there are nine refunds to the same company. And do we know why those refunds, which amounted to quite a bit of money? What was the basis for those, as they're all to the same company?
I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but they look like they were leased vehicles. And it could be that there were a number of the same types of leased vehicles that came up.
That's exactly what it is.
Yeah.
So, it's sent directly from Nissan Infinity Property Tax Operations. And then there's a list. An adjustment has been made on the rental vehicle by the assessor and created an overpayment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the question. And the answers. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Okay, whole business. Adopt the ordinance, School Building Committee. Do we have a motion?
Move the following. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen determines it is necessary to replace the roof at the Nyannick Center School and to approve and authorize the School Building Committee to undertake the project within approved appropriations and grant funds received by the town for that project. Further, pursuant to subsection A of East Line Ordinance, Section 31.25, the Board of Selectmen hereby appoints Board of Education members...
Do we know what members?
To serve as the eighth and ninth members of the School Building Committee.
Hi, Mariana Stevens, Director.
Hi, Mariana.
Hi. So, it's William Derry and Alisa Bradley.
Okay. So, we can amend?
They're currently on the committee now, but I'm not sure if they have to be reappointed.
Okay. So, I would amend it to appoint the Board of Education members, specifically William Derry and Alisa Bradley, to serve respectively as the eighth and ninth members of the School Building Committee.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? One of those candidates is up for election this time? Okay. Just to make a note? Yes. Okay. So, we'll see what happens, and we can always adjust things later on. Any other comments? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Appointments to the Pension Board. So, we're only going to discuss that. We're still, we're going to wait on that and wait for some qualified members to present themselves and be suggested to the Selectmen. And I think we'll wait till after the election to make those decisions, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, is there any holdup in terms of, you know, money being transferred because there is no one appointed to this? Is leaving the spot open, causing kind of a backlog for some town pensioners?
So, the answer to that is no. With the Pension Board, it's more forward-looking in how the money is invested and making timely investments. We have counsel that advises the Pension Board, but this will not delay anything or affect anybody's pension.
Okay, great.
Good question. Yeah. It's more of an advisory role.
Okay.
Yep. Good question. Thank you. Okay. So, we're going to pass that. Appointments to Capital Improvement Plan Committee Members. Just looked back onto the agenda we had discussed last time, waiting till after the election, so we won't be moving forward on that. Okay. All right. Item D, Discussion on Possible Action, Establishment of a Subcommittee for a Poet Laureate. Jason, I think you had an interest in...
Yeah, should I move?
Yeah.
Move to establish a Subcommittee to the Board of Selectmen entitled, "Poet Laureate Search Subcommittee," and to appoint the following members. I guess I'll appoint, can I appoint myself? Throw my hat in the ring, so to speak?
I don't think, I don't think you can appoint yourself.
Okay. Then maybe I should rescind this and let someone else do it?
Okay.
Someone's got to make a motion.
So, you want to be the poet laureate?
No, I do not want to be the poet laureate.
Oh, okay. Well, all right. You want to, all right.
I think Jason wants to be part of the Subcommittee, perhaps? Am I correct on that?
Yes, yes.
That would be tasked with getting, finding and...
Got it.
A poet laureate. I think that's...
Okay.
He would be the ex officio, I guess, of the Subcommittee.
So, we then, so the motion is to appoint members to a Subcommittee. But we don't really have a...
How about create it? Should I rescind the motion from, or rescind, appoint the following members and just move to create it, so we can discuss it?
So, to create a Subcommittee?
Mm-hmm.
Because we don't really know who is, like, what, how many people, what, what type of people we're going to put on this Subcommittee. So, I think that's what the discussion needs to be.
So, maybe we should just, maybe we shouldn't move to create the committee. So, why don't we just have a discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, let's table any motions.
Okay.
And why don't we just have an open discussion about the idea of how it would work and what your vision is? Your items suspecting that you want to have a committee, and then they would try to identify someone that might be a likely poet laureate.
Right. So, I did a little bit of legwork after the last meeting and said that there's really no precedent for it.
Mm-hmm.
So, it left, you know, the six of us scratching our heads, what to do next.
Yeah.
I think the best way to go forward would be to select some kind of committee of people within the town who have expertise in this and kind of task them with what's the ideal candidate, what's the best way forward, what are the responsibilities, and kind of report back to us in some kind of official capacity for a more formal vote.
So, this would be an ad hoc committee?
Yeah.
An informal committee? Okay. So, I think what we could do is, why don't we put feelers out there to see who would be interested to serve on such a committee? And what, how many people should there be, do you think? Let's talk about it. Don, what do you think? We'll start at your end of the table. How many people do you think should be out of poet laureate?
Three to five.
Three to five. Yeah? What do you think? Three to five?
Yeah, that sounds fine with me. I was also just going to say, I did, there is a poet laureate for the state that has an official poet laureate. That's the only thing. And then I know the high school also, I guess at graduation, they get a volunteer to do some kind of, you know, poem or something for the high school. But yeah, I think if we can get three to five people, and I think maybe you modify that based upon, you know, how many people we can get.
Have an interest?
Yeah, exactly. To be on the committee, to...
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good range. It is hard to get people to participate in things. Maybe if we shoot for three people, would that be adequate?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Roseanne, what do you think?
I'm open to either.
Okay.
I like the number five, because it allows for more input, more diversity.
Okay.
Three is kind of a small group.
So, why don't we, so why don't we do this? Let's talk it up, see who we know that might want to serve in that capacity, and then by the next meeting, I think what, the next meeting is on the 5th?
Yes.
We'll have people that are interested submit their names, and then we can go through the list and see if we can't put together a committee. If we get five or six people, we can get five. If we only get four people, well, the committee is three, an odd number. Yeah? That sound, that sound right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
Great. Good idea. It's a nice thing. Okay. So, new business. Well, we're going to collapse some of the new business. We're not going to discuss the e-ticketing or the property maintenance or the Pension Board ordinances. We're still waiting for feedback from our attorneys for proposed ordinances as a starting point to look at. So, we'll just table those three items. We'll table all of they, and maybe by next meeting, our attorneys will have draft ordinances. Ordnances are a little more substantive than a simple motion that we ask them to draft. So, let's see how far along they get with it, and then we'll revisit that at the next meeting. So, because of that, B will go off, we won't be scheduling any public hearings on ordinances. So, that brings us to 3C. And I see Anna Perch is here tonight. Thank you for joining us. And she's going to make a presentation about Brookside Farm Museum. Yes, please use the podium and... Great. Thank you very much. And if you would, use the podium and identify yourself, of course, for the record. You know who you are, but... So, we have a good record. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Anna Perch, and I'm the curator at Brookside Farm Museum. And thank you so much for having me. I, my printer wasn't working just before I left very well, so I am doing some of my notes on my phone, so I apologize. But I really just wanted to be here tonight to share with you updates and remind you about Brookside up the hill there, that we are working on some great stuff, and I just wanted to make sure that I'm not operating in a vacuum and that everybody's aware. And we start to, you know, just communicate more about what's going on there, and I'm always able to come back. But as I was starting to put together things, it became a six-page report, which I can also use for grant writing and stuff like that, so I was happy to do it. But I decided I'll keep my comments brief, as brief as possible tonight, and let you guys go home and read that report, and feel free to give me any feedback that you would like. So, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the preservation and sort of the renewal of Brookside, or my hopes for it. As some of you may know, for the first time in decades, we're seeing some major investment in the building, thanks to a low SIP grant that we've finally figured out how to access. It took a long time. It was one of the most complicated. And then it ended up being a very simple process, working with SHIBO and with the Office of OPM to make that happen, but it's starting soon. So, that's really exciting, and I'm planning on spending much of the winter focusing on that project and getting it up and running. And we'll be having the major rot that's around the outside of the house repaired, the roof that's leaking extensively now repaired, and then the house painted for the first time in ages, so long that it's believed to have lead in it, which would mean it would have to have been probably not painted since the beginning, since the first major restoration. So, it's really ready, and I'm very excited for that, because it makes it look very sad in the condition that it's in. So, that's exciting. We're also wrapping up a very detailed historic structures report that is funded in part by the SHIBO, the State Historic Preservation Office. That will be ready in a couple of months, and it just sort of gives a lot of insight and guidance as to sort of the significance of the house and expertise about sort of what to do with it moving forward. And then at this, we're also getting an architectural assessment report. Believe it or not, those are two different things, and both rather expensive. But that one's funded by the feds through SHIBO entirely, and that will be to really take a detailed look at the architecture and the value of the architecture and also make recommendations for the preservation in the future. And what I really like about that is if you guys look back on the historic register nomination for Brookside back in the 70s, the main reason it was designated a historic place was because it was one of the original examples of a, oh my gosh, why am I forgetting the name of it, of that type of house? I'll remember it somewhere through here. But it was one of the original, you know, examples of that. It was one of the first times that people in the United States had become sort of wealthy enough to start to show off and build these more showy houses. And so, that was the main reason why it was designated as historic. And so, we'll be able to learn more about how to, you know, promote that and, you know, make more of that. So, and as you know, we've been, or may know, we've been changing the outside, the landscape, pretty dramatically by participating in something called the Homegrown National Park Movement. And that's a national movement. We're one of the very few municipalities that have put ourselves on that map. It's very informal. You just, you just sign up for it on the website. And then you get access, though, to all of these resources to learn how to preserve and restore the natural ecosystem. And since we have, I think it's about 35 acres or so that we're working with, it's really important to, I believe, to do that. And so, we've been working on that for a year and a half with a grant from the Community Foundation of Eastern Connecticut, and it's going really well. What I, one of the things I've learned that's really exciting is that it's not nearly as hard to get rid of invasive species, or at least manage them, as any of us may have thought. I certainly never, I always thought it was hopeless, but we've learned a really great lesson that it's not. And part of the, part of that saves us a lot of money in not having to landscape the property, because that's exactly what you do not want to do. You just want to nurture natives and get rid of invasives. And that's a relatively low cost. We can do it with volunteers, especially volunteers who may want to be learning about how they can promote this project in their own backyards and someday turn, you know, half of East Line or more into a homegrown national park. It's also about ending the use of pesticides in your own backyard, so we can do that. And it was also, just with the labor alone of Colin Bennett from Swamp Yankee Earth Care, it was not nearly as lengthy or difficult as I thought it was going to be. I mean, I thought it was going to be a years-long process to get rid of all of those invasive species, and it has not been. And we're really lucky that we're now able to move into the woodland area, and we're going to be trying to, we're looking at trying to turn that into an arboretum. We've partnered with Connecticut College Arboretum in the past, and they've been really great, and they've offered some really fantastic advice and taught us about it. And Colin Bennett, my earth care specialist, and I are really committed to making that happen. So, that's also relatively easy. I mean, not easy, but it's relatively easy. But we need to see that backwoods restored into a healthy ecosystem, but also a place where people will want to walk, restore that pond back there, and, you know, become it sort of an outdoor classroom where we can use it and teach it, and people from the library can come over and stuff like that. So, that's going really well. It's really exciting. It's taken a lot off of our plates in terms of having to figure out how to manage, you know, the outdoor space. And if you've noticed, if you drive by, like, the middle school, right across the street from the middle school, you'll see these three Douglas firs that sit prominently. You may have noticed that they look very bare these days, and that's because in pretty much one day, Colin was able to, with a helper, was able to remove all of the invasive species that were completely choking that, that those trees. I'm almost embarrassed to say I would spend some of my hours just going out there hacking at it myself, because I just couldn't stand looking at it anymore. And Colin happens to have a method that's really effective to pull the stuff up from the actual roots naturally. So, that's exciting. Those trees will remain here for quite a long time now, and they will look pretty. So, so anyway, so that was a good, a great development, I feel like, in, at Brookside. But also, we've been, since I've been here for a couple of years, we've been spending a lot of time trying to build partnerships. And we've, I'm happy to report that we've developed a really great partnership with the public library. And they now offer, you know, they're screaming for space. They now offer some of their programming at our site. They had, did a workshop in our barn the other day. They also put our programs on their calendar and their website, so that helps us generate traffic. And we're meeting all the time and chatting all the time about different opportunities. And of course, they also house the Historical Society. So, that's sort of an untapped partnership that I want to, you know, make stronger at all. We really have not had any communication with the Historical Society, except through Lisa Timothy, the Executive Director of the Library. But because we're right next door, and because we were established to be officially the museum of the Town of East Line back in the, in the day, it would certainly make sense to increase that partnership. And so, I will be working on that, and I hope that they will work on it with me as well. So, oh, I was, whether, so with all of these partnerships, we also partner with East Line Pollinator, or the Pollinator Pathway of East Line. We partner with Wild Ones, which is another similar organization that is doing great stuff to educate people about the environment. They're coming up in a month or so with another, with a program that we're going to be doing together. There's all sorts of potential for things like that with the schools. We used to host educational workshops about history, and schools would come over for field trips. That hasn't gone on in, you know, more than a decade, and I would really like to be able to bring that back. So, some of my time is spent trying to continue to nurture those partnerships. And we can share meeting space. We can share archival storage space. We can do joint programs, and we can do long-term planning, where my dream is that we become sort of a larger history campus, where the Historical Society, Brookside, and the library, and possibly the other two historic homes are all converged one happy day in the future. If you look at the Town of Simsbury, they have a great example that I always keep in the back of my mind of one building at the Historical Society was originally there in that location, and then they add, they moved the other buildings to that location to create sort of a historic campus. Then they added a modern building for the actual archives and the research and everything like that. And that is just sort of the centerpiece, but it puts it all into one place, and everybody's hopefully working together and, you know, utilizing their resources a little bit more efficiently. So, that's always in the back of my mind. And then also, on the inside of the house, we're sort of trying to deepen the stories that we actually tell. One of the things that has, the only thing that was ever found in that house to be original to the house was this thing called the Christmas, the Christmas, the Christian Freeman, which is an abolitionist newspaper that was printed on August 7th of 1845. And it was discovered hidden behind the walls when the house was restored. So, it was, you know, I was very interested in it when I got there, and we, and thanks to the Friends of Brookside Farm Museum, we were able to send it off to be preserved by the Northeast Document Conservation Center. And now it's back. The original's in a box, and there's a replica on the wall. But there's so much more to tell about that story that, you know, we don't know if it actually happened, if anything happened at Brookside. We have no idea why it was there and why it was behind the walls. But it, I would like to focus on that for a while as the, as the only thing that's original to the house, besides the house itself. I think that we've got a lot to discover there. And also, I'd like to develop a little bit more about the story of Amos Watros, who was, we've always known that he was a little boy who was named in the census in 1850 as living with Thomas Avery and his family in 1850. And he was black, and he was by himself, and he didn't have any family with him there. So, I was always very curious about him, and why was he there? Slavery had been abolished in 1848, so there's something going on. And thanks to Tom Shook, our local amateur but really terrific historian, he was able to do some research for us and find out a little bit more about him that makes it very, that makes for a very compelling and interesting story. And when you combine that with the story of abolitionism, this sort of progressive movement of people working together to cause, like, really tremendous social change back then, I think it could really be a dynamic, interesting exhibit. And we've never given any attention to another person who lived in that house, besides the Avery's, the Smiths, and the Harrises. Amos Watros also lived there. And actually, his name, Tom discovered for us, his name was not Amos Watros. I don't know why it was on the census incorrectly, but his name was Congdon, Amos Congdon. And there's a whole story about his family here in town. So, I would like to spend some time talking about that and doing an exhibit on that. And we've entered into a little partnership, a discovery phase of this, with a prominent historian in the state of Connecticut, Tammy Denise, and we're going to start working on that. And all of that, that funding for that, by the way, comes from the Friends of Brookside Farm Museum, which I'll talk about a little bit more. Actually, it's time to talk about that now. So, one of our biggest challenges, or my biggest challenges in the time that I've been here, has been that the Friends of Brookside Farm Museum was not exactly operating according to its mission and its governing documents in terms of it is designed, as is any Friends group across the country that's attached to a museum or a library. Its purpose is to raise funds for the museum, to support our programs and to make some of those things possible that otherwise would not be possible. And we had, they had raised, they have raised very little money over the last few years. So, we took some time to revisit that. And by the way, none of that is, and is, I would say, is the fault of the Friends that were there. They all really dedicated themselves and their energy to working at Brookside and doing good things for it. It just, that's just the way it was, was it just, we didn't have a fundraising arm, which I think of as the most important thing. So, we sort of went on a little dormancy over the summer, and the people who were there, the, it was only three people who were actually friends, left, and we are now rebuilding it. And we're, I'm restructuring it just sort of based on my own experience and some of the best practices for nonprofits like that, so that it's, it's set up with volunteers and, you know, anybody, if we can afford to pay people out of that budget, we will. But to raise big bucks, because I think of the Town of East Line as responsible, and they do, you do a great job of keeping that structure going, keeping the lights on, keeping the heat on, which, you know, and all of the utilities, and maintaining the lawn and all of that important stuff, and paying my salary. And that's, I think, especially in the position that the town is in right now, I think that's plenty. And that's, I think, especially in the position that the town is in right now, I think that's plenty. And I really think that in order to increase our operating capacity and the programming that we offer, we really need to do more fundraising. And I can do grant writing and all of that kind of stuff, and they can too. So I wanted to just, you know, make that clear. And then now I've lost my thing. I've gotten down to the end, almost at the end. I knew that would happen. I knew I wouldn't stick exactly to the script either. So another big area where the Friends struggled and where I struggle is with new volunteer recruitment. When COVID lifted, the volunteerism had really gone, you know, down the tubes. And so I'm here to ask for your help in that, to spread the word that we, you know, that we need volunteers. We need them in the areas of, you know, developing, running educational programs, teaching educational programs, being a docent, being a tour guide, fundraising, hosting events, gardening, stewarding the landscape, teaching, you know, arts or crafts, or being on the commission, or being involved, you know, with the governing of the Friends group. So, you know, we're low on volunteers right now. We are starting to build a couple new really fun, interesting folks who have a lot of energy. And I think that it will grow. I have to believe that it will grow as we spread the word and start to, you know, do some programming that really resonates with people. But, so, also, you know, since I've been there, commissioners Gary Lakowski and Bob Stifel and Maggie Prokoff all stepped away for, you know, for very good reasons. But I did want to just publicly thank them and the former Friends, Donna Massong and Chuck Massong and Wanda Stasic for all of the work that they did do to keep afloat for all of this time. We couldn't have stayed alive without their contributions. And we're actually going to be rebuilding a historic fence around the kitchen garden there in their honor, using the Friends funds, using a fund that was established by a donor who left restrictions for her gift, which was to do something to preserve the house. So we're going to be, I'm going to be working on that soon. I mean, not physically, but I will be hiring somebody to build a beautiful historic fence. So when I think about the present and the future of Brookside, I think, I take inspiration from places humbly like Coogan Farm in Mystic. It's, you know, it's a historic site. It has a historic building. The most of the programming is in the barn. They have, they even have a childcare center there. They have art classes. And then the rest of it is walking tours of the property and being outside. And they have a giving garden and things like that. I imagine, I sort of envision ourselves being like that someday. And including, you know, a small visitor center. Even, they even have a beautiful gift shop. It would be great to have, you know, an Eastlime, you know, centered gift shop over there that people from the community center could visit. And also having some seasonal events like a farmer's market, concerts, which we've been doing quite successfully, and offering some more community and culture to the north end of town, where we have farmer's markets, and we have McCooks, and we have things like that down south. But we don't have a whole lot of that, to my knowledge, up north. So I would love to see us do more of that. And like I said, we're going to be continuing to expand the Homegrown National Park and turning, hopefully turning Brookside into a living outdoor classroom that will benefit the environment, you know, the environment and the community. I don't know if you've seen, but we had three Eagle Scout projects in the last year. And one of them was building an outdoor chalkboard and seats that will stay there forever. The other was rebuilding a little boardwalk. And the other was creating something, an old-fashioned type of fence, where you take actually like invasives and different things, and you build with natural, you know, with natural products, your fence. So I was, so the next chapter for Brookside, and my hope is just not about only maintaining the past, but it's also about bringing it to life. And I really think that we can become one of Eastlime's most inspiring public spaces once again. And like I said, I have much more detail in that report. And I have, I will put that, I'm happy to put that report on our website so that people watching, or if you want to direct people to that in the future, if you're talking about it, I would be, you know, I'm available for questions and meetings and any sort of collaboration you would like to have. Actually, Roseanne and I talked recently, and I thought this was a really great idea, of visiting some of these sites that I mentioned in the report that act as, that could act as just inspiration for what we do. And they're great sites. One of them is as far away as Katona, New York, where I used to live, which is an actual farm museum, which we are not, even though that, our name says that. We just, we just aren't a farm museum. And it would take a tremendous amount of resources and a tremendous amount of public interest to do that. And believe it or not, if you're interested in history, it's very hard to believe this, but I've been in the museum world for 20 years or so. And it is well-known in the museum industry and the historic preservation industry that people in general are not that interested in history. So if they come once, we're lucky. And unless we change sort of the focus of what we're doing and make it more of a living museum and a community space, we're going to, you know, miss out on some great opportunities to offer to our, you know, our residents. So that's where I'm at, and there's lots more in that report. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Yeah.
I just want to say, I thought it was an excellent presentation. I think it's really interesting, really encouraged that so much is getting done there. Just a quick question. This is just for my own edification.
Yeah.
How do they get rid of invasives? Do they just pull them out?
That's, you gotta come and take one of our programs and learn. Yeah, it's, you have to have the, you have to be able to follow the root, especially a bittersweet, all the way through to the end. And Colin, who I adore, and he has actually, I would highly recommend him to work on other town projects if you need it, because he's one of the few people in the field who does this, and he's really great. He's actually developed his own sort of tool that helps him pull the roots, whereas most of us give up and we just cut it at the bottom, or we cut it at the bottom and then we use a pesticide to hopefully kill it. He pulls it and pulls it and pulls it from the root. Actually, he hasn't removed most of it from the site. So if you go to Brookside right now, you'll see these big piles of waste that are, that is sitting there drying out, and you'll see how big it is. I mean, some of them is just, you know, eight, eight feet, 20 feet long. It's amazing. It's very rewarding. I love pulling bittersweets. It's one of my favorite things. So, yeah, he has a method, and it really does work.
Great. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I'm really delighted, happy to see all of this transformation. I was part of the original committee when fought to prevent the house from being torn down.
Yeah.
And I can remember when I first came to town, you could go there and buy milk. You could actually have milk delivered from there. And also, a real farmer's market with the farmers.
Wow, wow. I love that idea. I mean, we could certainly do that again. There are ways that we can continue to work on agriculture and farming philosophies without actually becoming, you know, trying to become a full farm museum. We can have more programming like that, farmer's markets. We can teach about agriculture and things like that. We have actually partnered for a while with the Agricultural Commission here. And we tried to find some programs to work on together. Didn't quite mesh yet. But, you know, we all do, we do all talk, most of us, and try to bring those things together. So thanks.
You also have to remember that the property was originally much larger.
Yeah.
Now we have the industrial park in the background, so the other buildings. So the idea of trying to bring back what was originally there and have live farm animals and this, it's just not possible. So you get to recreate the vision.
Right, yeah. Coogan Farm does do that. In Katona, they have the live animals. But, you know, that's, that's not gonna, that's not gonna happen. But we can still pay homage to that for sure. And we can also pay homage to the things that existed at that property long before 1845. I mean, you know, there were Native Americans living on that property. There's lots and lots and lots of stories to tell, especially of the whole, where the whole farm used to be, all the way up to Stop &amp; Shop, I believe, to where Costco is now. It's huge.
We've come a long ways, because in the 60s, our major problem was keeping hobos out of the house and from setting fires in the house.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah.
To keep warm.
Yeah.
So this is great. We've got things happening.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for all that you've done for it over all of these years. It's really fantastic.
I'd actually like to piggyback on that comment. Well, first of all, this Brookside Farm Museum is an educational, cultural, ecological, historical asset. It's a real gem kind of in the center of our town, and you've done a lot of great work there. So I want to thank you for kind of helping that little gem to shine.
Thank you.
But I would also like to, and not to diminish any of the work you've been doing at Brookside Farm Museum, I'd also like to introduce you to the board as the Director of the New London Homeless Hospitality Center, correct?
No, I wish. No, I don't wish. The Development Director, fundraiser. Yeah.
So you are involved with another service that helps out in our town, that helps deal with, you know, people who are unhoused or maybe facing housing insecurity, like the folks that you were just referencing. So it's kind of an interesting little loop to this story.
Thank you. Yes, and also, you know, that's my full-time job. Brookside is a part-time job. I do it mostly in the evenings and on the weekends, and I filter in other times throughout the week, but as necessary. But yes, I do do that. And we've had, you know, we've had people, unhoused people on that property living in their cars while I've been there. And luckily, I'm able to, you know, try to connect them to services. I know the police were doing, you know, trying to be helpful as well. So it's nice to, yeah, be able to be in this town. And I can tell you that there were, I think, last fiscal year and currently, in this fiscal year, there's been about five people who called Eastlime their last residence at the homeless shelter. So, you know, it really is a problem in every community in southeastern Connecticut right now. Yes.
First of all, thank you for the energy and the passion. It comes through in your presentation very nicely.
Thank you.
I learned something. I thought slavery was abolished post-Civil War, or at the end of the Civil War, 1848, you said.
Across the country, it was abolished post-Civil War, but in Connecticut, it was abolished in 1848.
Very impressive. And the last thing was you, I was just trying to help. Is it post and beam construction you were looking for, as far as you said the style of the house?
No. Greek Revival. I told you I'd remember it. Greek Revival. Yes. Thank you.
I was gonna Google, I was trying to Google it, but my phone won't work.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you. Thank you.
I think we changed our system here today. All right.
All right.
Just, you know, you've done wonderful work over there. I really have enjoyed working with you when I was ex officio for historic properties. And just keep up the good work, and we're happy to support your efforts there.
Thank you. You guys have already been great. And actually, I meant to say also, thanks to Jason, to you and to Jason for being such active ex officios and liaisons. That's been supremely helpful. And he's always available, you know, to, for me to bounce questions off of, especially since a lot of my work time is not during the actual business day. It's really been, been great to have that partnership as well. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. I agree with the term "energy." You brought tremendous energy to Brookside Farms, and much appreciated.
Thanks. I'm trying. I mean, I still feel like we're quite underutilized, and we could do, you know, a whole lot more. So we just need even more energy and participation to make that.
I think we're on a new trajectory there. I really feel it.
I think so.
You're a big part of that, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Well, it was very interesting. Next is appointments to zoning, appointment to a zoning board of appeals. Do we have a motion?
Move to appoint Patricia Kolosowski of 52 Indianola Road, Nyannick, to serve as an alternate member on the zoning board of appeals with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second?
All right. Any discussion? Would you like to address the board? Pardon me?
Yes, I just, I want some clarification.
Yeah, please. Just identify yourself and enter the podium.
Patricia Kolosowski.
Yes.
I'm, I'm an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals now. I wanted to be a full member in January. I'm interested. Someone is rotating off. So I'm just questioning the motion.
Okay, so you're already serving as?
An alternate. I am an, I have an alternate position on the zoning board of appeals now.
Okay, and then somebody's going to step down in January, you said?
That's my understanding. They're supposed to be.
And then you want to be appointed in January?
Yes, yes.
So then I think we need to actually appoint you in January.
Yeah.
This is premature. I did not know that. I called the town, and this is what I was told to do. So what do I do?
That's, we'll just, we'll table this, and then in January, after your term expires.
My term expires in '28, I think, officially. I don't, for the alternate position.
Okay, so you want to switch from alternate to permanent, is what you're trying to say?
Yeah, I'd like to be a member, a full member. That's my.
Yeah, so in January, you'd probably have to withdraw as an alternate and then be appointed, you know what I mean, the same day as the, as a, as a full.
So what do I do?
Your term doesn't expire in January of 2026.
No.
That's what it says here in the law.
No, but that's to, yeah, this is.
Yeah, if we were to move forward with this, we would be reducing your term.
I know that. That's why I'm, that's why I said I want to make it. That's exactly right, yes.
Yeah.
So what do I, what should I do?
Well, there.
If there's going to be an opening in January, I would like it. I guess I'm not.
So keep your position as an alternate.
I will do that. Yes, yes.
And then know, then we will have noted in our minutes that you have expressed an interest.
Yes.
And then it would be a good idea, when your term actually expires, to then re-notify us that this is what you would like to do.
No, no, your term expires, so.
'28. You'd have to resign.
In January, just contact the first electman's office and.
We'll figure out the best way to do it.
All right. I didn't know what to do.
Yeah, so this is premature, and so it's not right to do this tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
Once that spot opens up and you have an interest on, probably what would happen is you would, you would have to resign as an alternate.
Okay.
And it has to be made a full number.
That's fine. That would be nice.
The board has a six down both sides.
So when is that position, when would I, so that I know what to do?
Now that we understand it, let us figure out.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. We'll figure out the sequence here.
All right. I didn't want to miss the window, so I was calling the town and finding out. Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
So we'll just table that motion.
Okay.
All right. And then we did add item E, which is another appointment, Parks and Rec.
Move to appoint Kenzie Lloyd of 22 Cardinal Road, Eastlime, to serve as a member on the Parks and Recreation Commission for the term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Great. Okay. Kenzie's expressed an interest, and I believe the board is in favor of it. And so, any further discussion?
I looked up her party affiliation, and she is an unaffiliated.
She's unaffiliated. And there's no problem with that, right?
That's correct.
Yep. Okay. So, having said that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Great. Okay, do we have any ex officio reports tonight?
I'll lead off. The zoning commission met last week, and there was quite a large attendance of people wishing to speak in terms of the proposal to have the dog park at, where? Darryl Pond. Sorry, blank. The majority of them spoke in opposition to that. And there were several, of course, people who have presented previously who were very interested in getting a dog park created in town. The board heard probably close to an hour of testimony and comments, and then voted unanimously to deny that request. So we still have a large number of people in town who would like to see a dog park created. Question is, where can we find the property for that that does not impede on the lives of existing property owners and is also consistent with the goals that we have for certain spaces, places that the town has purchased to be open space and park-like? So this is going to, I think, be an item that residents who are interested in a dog park are going to continue to pursue. And I thought it was very interesting that it was a unanimous vote of the zoning commission that that was not an appropriate location for them, based on the reasons for why the town purchased that property in the first place. So that's it for me tonight.
Can I follow up with that? Give it up. So I was speaking to somebody the other day who said that Gateway Commons had a dog park. So I actually reached out to Gateway Commons, and I'm waiting to hear back from the property manager just to see if there's any way that any of the residents of East Line could use the dog park at Gateway Commons. So I don't know if it will amount to anything, but I was talking to somebody, they said that, and I was like, well, let me see if I can figure out anything.
Well, it's a great idea, but could you come up with some arrangement with that?
Well, that's, that was my idea, yeah. So I'm still, I'll touch back when, after I hear back from them.
That's, that was a great idea. All right. Jason?
The Stars to Stem is going to have a planetarium fundraiser, a very popular group called Mystic Dead. It's going to be playing there on October 24th. It'll be a little bit pricier, it'll be $20 a ticket as opposed to the normal $10 a ticket. And this, this is going to be a fundraiser from a group that rented out the space. So it's kind of exciting to have that little, that little asset be utilized.
What's the name of the group, what's the group again?
The group is called Mystic Dead Quartet. It's going to be four musicians from a larger group called Mystic Dead, popular Grateful Dead cover band. I don't know if this is the proper time to drop this in here, but this is our final, full Board of Selectment meeting prior to the election. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the Board of Selectment members for, for working together these past two years. And I understand we're all up for election in sub-capacity. And I just wanted to commend you all for throwing your hat in the ring in such a crazy time in, you know, in, in American history and culture. And to put yourself out there, it really takes courage. And I commend you for it, and I hope to see you again soon.
We'll still be coming back.
Well, yeah, there's plenty working done.
We're not off the hook yet.
I just want to wish you all good luck.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
To everybody.
Thanks, Jay.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. That's very gracious. Donna, any?
I have tomorrow, WellsCo tomorrow night. We've ordered plans to come in.
Great.
And we had a good price on that coming from Branford. And that may have already taken place last Saturday, or it's, I doubt it because of the weather.
Yeah.
And the other thing was last night, planning, pretty status quo, except for the very end, the last topic was chickens. And could people have poultry on their property with two acre lots? Which I think's a good idea. And everybody seemed to think it's a pretty good idea, because apparently the eggs are that much better, whatever. But the definition came up, like, where's poultry? And, and so that, that was, it's kind of tabled, but it's not. I think it's going to proceed through, that if people could have up to a half dozen chickens.
On two, if they have two acres?
I think the number was two acres, yes, sir. And so it brought up some fun discussion about what is poultry? And could it be a consor, could it be an ostrich, you know, little? Well, it's, you know, so anyway. It sounded like it was very, Mrs. Calhoun brought the proposal forward. She clearly has two acres, so.
Well, you know, we'll see where it goes. I hope people won't count the chickens where they hatch, but, you know, we'll see where.
I was waiting for that one.
I know.
Donna, wasn't there another discussion at planning besides that about, I think it was a request for a driveway to be put in, or?
Planning, or you said claiming?
Planning.
Yeah, they, they passed last night that you have to have 40 feet of clearance between the outside of the property and a driveway. And one gets within 10 feet, and they didn't see it as a detriment. So that, that passed last night, they're going to allow that to take place. It's going to go to zoning, but it's going to, it's going to allow that to take place. It should not affect the general spot, the entire set of the whole property at all. So.
Well, isn't that roadway that they're requesting, doesn't that feed into the open space?
Yes. I don't have the drawing room, I could show you, but.
You're welcome.
I was comfortable where it was left up.
That's right, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Donna.
Yep.
Okay. Anne, anything?
The only thing I was going to say, I just attend a inland wetlands meeting the other night. And the, the main thing was, the regulations are almost set. I think it's like, they've been working diligently in the past few years on these things to be presented to the Board of Selectment. And I did request that they kind of do like bullets to say, these are the amendments, these are the main issues that the Board of Selectment should review because it's pretty voluminous and, you know.
To break it down so we can.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, that was about it.
Okay. The Police Commission meeting was canceled because it was Columbus Day. But there were a few things I'll just mention. We do have the temporary wall that we built from the last storm two years ago down in McCooks, and it held up during this northeaster. There was a lot of wave activity hitting into it. But, you know, the engineers in our town, they came up with the plan to build that temporary wall. They really did a wonderful job. It, it didn't shift, and it's still intact after this most recent storm. So that's encouraging. You know, it'll be big money to, to get the, the rail repair done. So I think the longer we can live with the temporary wall, I think that'll help us a little bit in long-term planning for budgets. The storm did take out the power. Saunders Point was without power for, up until midnight that, that night. It was quite a mess with, you know, with, with the trees and tangled in the plodding wires that go down there. So, but Eversource was on task, they were here, and a lot of trucks and a lot of personnel, and they got the job done. And simultaneously, we had a big event down on Route 156 just after you come off X of 72, you can take a right heading down towards Public Safety before you get to the campground. There was another large tree that went down, and it, it took out the power, but it also took out our communications, the fiber, fiber optic cables and other communications cables that were on the, on the pulse. And it impacted our Public Safety building, and they had, you know, the generator came on immediately. They had power. But that one link that comes up, Route 156, had interrupted some of our emergency communications, 911. So it just reemphasizes how important, you know, I've talked, I've been talking about how we have to keep moving forward on improving our radio infrastructure. And we've talked about it at the Board of Finance and on other places. So we want to make sure that we have adequate redundancies, towers that can go point to point without, you know, being, if a tree comes down, it won't cut a cable. So, you know, microwave communications is going to be very, very important. So we're moving in that direction, and we're going to continue to do so. But again, this recent storm highlights how important those concerns are. That's about all I have for the first selectman's report. Are there any communications tonight? Anyone who wants to?
I forgot to mention that on Tuesday, the 21st, at 6 o'clock, the 250th Committee will meet.
When was it, Tuesday?
The Tu- Tuesday, the 21st, at 6 o'clock. So if you know of any other, others who would like to attend and discuss and present ideas for how we might celebrate, then that's what the committee's about.
And where's that going to be, Roseanne?
Right here.
All right.
See you then.
It's Tuesday. And what's the date?
The 21st, Tuesday.
10/21, 10/21. Thank you, Roseanne. And thank you for all your effort in trying to pull something together to commemorate 250 years.